Uh, Mike, are we ready to roll?
Yep, starting right now.
Good morning, the time is now 9:30 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of February 9th, 2021 is called to order. Due to the COVID-19 national emergency and in accordance with Public Act 254 of 2020, the State Board of Education regular and committee of the whole meeting is being convened with remote access technology. First item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Hearing and seeing.
Michael, I would like to add something to the agenda, so I'm moving to amend the agenda if we can all consider it. I was hoping, just in light of so much having changed in the last month, that we would be willing to discuss and possibly act on a resolution encouraging local school districts to inform parents and students of their return to school date and plan. That would be something that I think would really be helpful for a lot of kids right now. I think it's urgent and pertinent, so if we can fit that into our agenda today. I think it's supported too by other public officials and the governor, so if we could discuss that and sort of as a board be willing to take it up, I would really appreciate it.
So this is a discussion about urging local school districts to define a return to learn date.
And plan for their local school district.
Okay, and that would be, that would be in addition to their statutory requirement to meet monthly and to share monthly at their local school board meetings what their plans are for the ensuing month?
I think it would be more in step with what Governor Whitmer has requested by March 1st.
Okay.
You know, we could put it in the form of resolution. I've gotten so many emails and people reaching out over the last month and even over the last week that I really do think it's the beat right now, it's the heartbeat of where people are at. And so I have worked on some things, I could share it via email, we could consider it over lunch and discuss it further in the agenda if that's something that people would be willing to do.
I'll support that. Okay, so we have a move and a support for the urging of the board, State Board's urging that each local school district make clear its return to learn date and plan, consistent with statute and the governor's urging on January 8th. Any discussion thereon? Here, Dr. Pugh. Dr. Pugh, I can't hear you.
Can you still not hear me? I'm not muted.
Let's turn it up.
Are you able to turn up your volume? Lower right corner?
My volume's all the way up, you still can't hear me? Let me make sure.
No, I can, we can hear you now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, shut up. Can't see me. So I guess my concern is maybe I'm confused as what the plan, the current plan and what the governor's current intent is and/or what we're proposing. If we're proposing to discuss what a return to school looks like and how we're articulating that and communicating that to communities, I'm fine with that, but if we're saying that at the end that we want to include an agenda item that's saying when schools need to return, we're giving us representative date, I don't know that the governor is saying that and I don't know that we have the wherewithal here at all to say that or to give that type of information.
Okay, other discussion, board members?
Tom, I don't know if you want to weigh in, but I guess I would just say that, you know, this is, this would be a resolution that our board could, you know, collectively and in a bipartisan way, right now be sort of in step with Governor Whitmer's recommendation to, for local school districts to come up with their own plan and to communicate that to parents and students by March 1st. So I think she's already kind of set the tone and parents are definitely, you know, protesting about it, it's definitely something that is an issue and we've made resolutions in the past that support things, various issues that I don't think it would hurt for us as a State Board of Education, which is, you know, defined as the body that takes the responsibility of guidance over all public school, to release a resolution that really encourages what parents are wanting and needing, kids are needing, and our governor has already suggested. So I'm just, you know, genuinely placing this before us as something that it seems, not just according to my own opinion, but urgent and pertinent and worth putting on the agenda.
Okay, and I just need to see what that language looks like, I don't know what the "it" is that we're talking about.
All right. All right, Dr. Pugh, I'm, again, I'm having trouble hearing you and I want to hear everything that you, I want to hear everything that you say, every pearl of wisdom.
Are you still having problems?
No, that's better, thank you.
I, my, I don't even remember what I said, but I'll try to repeat it. My thought is, is that I do agree that it is good having guidance that's out there and are you still having problems understanding me?
No, I hear you fine, thank you.
Okay, just making sure, but I just, I don't know what the "it" is that we're talking about, I'm just a little bit confused, but maybe this will come up in the, in the agenda, in the discussion with the agenda item.
Board member Lipton? You need to unmute.
I just want to make sure I understand that the issue before us is, Board Member Snyder would like to amend the agenda to include a discussion on whether we should have this resolution, am I correct on that, Board Member Snyder?
So a discussion and hopeful adoption of a resolution, which I can share my thoughts, I will email those out, we could chew on them during recess and, you know, edit back and forth together here this afternoon, that's fine. Yeah, that is, that is the motion, to amend the agenda for discussion and hopeful adoption of a resolution where we all agree on some kind of guidance to local schools.
Right, but I just want to make sure that, I mean, whether we adopt it or not, that's up for a vote or what have you, or how, I just want to make sure that right now, what we're considering is your motion to amend the agenda to consider a further item.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we've had some discussion, would anybody else care to add to the discussion?
I, I'll just say that I am eager to see the language, I know that this is a critical issue, so I'll be eager to see the language, but I'm ready for the question.
Right, but the motion before us is simply to consider the issue and we would put it under legislative update for discussion. Any more discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Marilyn, a roll call vote please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan? Is that a, is that a yes, Mr. McMillan?
We've got a thumbs up.
Yes, 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 sorry.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Very good, so we have the agenda as amended to vote on now, all in favor of the agenda as amended, if we could do a roll call vote, Marilyn, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strahorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, the person who has been so busy so early in this meeting is Ms. Marilyn Schneider, our State Board Executive, who will introduce the members of the State Board of Education. Ms. Schneider.
Happy to do so. Our president is Dr. Cassandra Albridge, she's from Dearborn. Dr. Pamela Pugh is the Vice President from Saginaw. Ms. Tiffany Tilly is Secretary from Southfield. Mr. Tom McMillan, Treasurer from Oakland Township. Dr. Judith Pritchett, NASB Delegate, which is the Boards Association, and SBE Legislative Committee Member from Washington Township. Ms. Ellen Cogen Lipton, she's the Chair of the Boards Legislative Committee, she resides in Huntington Woods. Ms. Nikki Snyder, SBE Legislative Committee Member from Dexter. Mr. Jason Strahorn, SBE Legislative Committee Member from Novi. Ms. Brandy Johnson, the Governor's Policy Advisor for Education and Workforce. And Mr. Owen Bondano, this year's Michigan Teacher of the Year, who teaches English Language Arts at the Oak Park Freshman Institute in Oak Park Schools, thank you.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. Our next agenda item, educational updates related to COVID-19. As I did at the last meeting, board members, I'll share briefly on a number of topics, some related to the immediacy of the pandemic, some related to post-pandemic. As you well know, in myriad ways across the state, country, and world, it has been a brutal year. When I updated the board at our January 12th board meeting, we were at 22.5 million cases nationally. By yesterday, we were at 27.1 million COVID cases nationally, an increase of approximately 4.6 million cases, or about a 20% increase in 28 days. By our January 12th meeting, we had had more than 375,000 deaths nationally. By yesterday, we had had more than 465,000 deaths nationally, an increase of 90,000 deaths, a 24% increase in 28 days. In Michigan, our data are flattening in a variety of categories, including new cases and positivity rates. Michigan cases rose from over 523,000 prior to our last board meeting to more than 569,000 yesterday, an increase of 9%, less than half the 20% increase nationally during the same 28-day period. That said, we continue to be vigilant and to urge adherence to mitigation protocols. In education, The New York Times recently published a story entitled, "13,000 School Districts, 13,000 Approaches to Teaching During COVID." Given substantial historic local control in states across the country, there are as many specific approaches to pandemic pre-K-12 education as there are public school districts nationally. For most of the school year, substantial majority of Michigan districts have offered at least an option of in-person instruction. In September, approximately three-quarters of all districts offered at least an option of in-person instruction, with only 23% fully remote. In October, more than four-fifths of all districts were offering at least an option of in-person instruction, with only 16% fully remote. For November, districts were planning in-person instruction in virtually identical percentages, a trend that would be disrupted by increases in COVID-19 case rates, then in hospitalization rates and deaths. The related epidemic orders that closed Michigan high schools additionally shifted the mix of districts offering the option of in-person instruction. For December, approximately half of all districts were offering in-person instruction, with the other half fully remote. Given the elevated numbers at the time, in the absence of these epidemic orders, more people would have become infected and more would have died. I want to thank the Legislature and Governor for helping making available these data, local school districts for producing the data, and MDE/SEPI and MSU/EPIC staff for their analysis of the data. Over the last several weeks, several factors have led to an increase in the percentage of districts offering the option of in-person instruction. The flattening case growth rate, the availability of antigen tests for school staff, the beginning of vaccinations, the belief that our efforts, when followed, are effective, and the governor's encouragement recently referred to by Ms. Snyder, that districts offer the option of in-person instruction on or before March 1st. As a result of these factors, the percentage of districts offering the option of in-person instruction in January increased to more than 61%. We anticipate monthly data for February in the coming week. In opening up every district, we must be vigilant about our mitigation efforts, mask wearing, social distancing to the extent possible, hand washing, and disinfecting. We often be, we also have to be vigilant about the new strains of coronavirus. We have to be quick as a nation with vaccine production, distribution, and administration. If we do all of these things and keep the new case curve largely flat, all districts should be able to open at some point this winter. I expect and am strongly encouraging districts to work with their communities to provide an in-person option if they have not been doing so. Every child and family won't want this option, that's fine, those who don't make it more possible for those that do, and we know that in-person instruction for most children is superior to education at a distance. With these conditions, I expect that the percentage of districts offering in-person instruction in February will exceed that in January, that the percentage in March will exceed that in February. As I shared with educators beginning in the summer, at the barest minimum, we should be offering the option of in-person instruction to our most educationally vulnerable children, children with profound special needs, fledgling readers, and beginning English language learners. Simply because a district is open does not mean that it is educating in-person all or even a majority of its students. School reopening is absolutely necessary, but it is not sufficient. For a period of time, perhaps through the remainder of the school year, many parents will choose to keep their children in remote instruction, and again, there's nothing wrong with that parent choice based on the individual circumstances of individual children, parents, and families. Families have to make the best choices for their individual circumstances. I would be remiss if I did not share a little about special populations. Across the state and country, the unintended consequences of local decision-making have been that certain groups of children have been less likely to receive in-person instruction: poor students, students in larger districts, students in urban districts, and Black and Brown students. Though unintentional, this is a particularly reprehensible outgrowth of the pandemic, an outgrowth that will further exacerbate gaps that existed in Michigan and across the country pre-pandemic. State summative assessments. As the board is aware, last March, the Department filed for waivers with the Michigan, with the United States Department of Education from federal requirements associated with administering state summative assessments and related accountability efforts. These waivers were approved for last school year immediately. In late June, we reapplied for the same waivers for this year and the request was denied in late August. At that time, we indicated that we would be reapplying for these waivers in the winter. Two weeks ago, we reapplied. We applied for these waivers for three broad sets of reasons. First, there is no way to administer validly and reliably state summative assessments this year. Indeed, the United States Department of Education, headed by its former U.S. Secretary, made a similar decision in determining not to administer the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NAEP, test this year. Note that NAEP is administered to a small sample of students across the country each year. If you can't administer NAEP validly and reliably to a sample, it's hard to imagine how we can administer MSTEP validly and reliably to a student population. The second reason we applied for these waivers, we chose in our state to mandate locally chosen, locally administered benchmark assessments this year. I recommended this use in my testimony to the Senate Education and Career Readiness Committee last July. Benchmark assessments are educators' tests. They provide quick information periodically to educators about the needs of individual students. They aren't fully analogous to state summative assessments, but are enormously helpful to educators to identify where children are. While there are also challenges to administration of benchmark assessments in a pandemic, especially for those who are at a distance, at a minimum, the results have relevance for those that test in-person at the end of this school year. We have benchmarks to give us a sense of where children are. Those who argue that a state summative assessment waiver is equivalent to not knowing where our children are in language, arts, and math, don't understand the existence and utility of benchmark assessments, which approximately 90% of the districts in the state were choosing to administer pre-pandemic. Third, state summative assessments take a large amount of time in the spring, they shouldn't be the assessment tail that wags the instructional dog coming out of a pandemic. We need to dedicate our time to the academic and social and emotional needs of children. I want to thank the governor and legislature for their support of a benchmark requirement this year. In the absence of benchmark assessments, at least for those who test in-person and for whom the test may be perceived to be valid and reliable, we couldn't have reasonably asked the U.S. Department of Education for a second set of waivers this year. At our last state board meeting, I shared that though many hoped for a return to normal, I thought that we needed to pivot instead to a new, better normal for two reasons. First, many of our children haven't learned as much as they should have in the last year, and we've work to do to catch them up to where they should be. And two, we were improving schools in the years before the pandemic with an understanding that we had a long way to go. I indicated that we needed to be guided by what we knew before the pandemic substantially included in our new state strategic education plan approved by the board in August and what the pandemic has taught us. I shared that over the last several years, Michigan has improved its performance in many of the state strategic education plan goal areas, and you've seen that improvement month by month as we've looked at goal by goal in the state strategic education plan, yet an enormous amount of work remains. During the pandemic, I indicated that we had learned lessons about time, home technology, community partnerships, literacy, social and emotional learning, or SEL slash community mental health, children's mental health, and school funding, lessons to guide us in the coming year. I'd like to elaborate on two of those lessons today, specifically time and school funding. Time, children have lost it during the pandemic, they need more next year. I didn't say an extension of this school year, I said more time next school year. Given the pandemic, whether they were educated primarily at a distance or largely in-person, most students will receive less instruction from March of last year through the end of this school year than in any similar period of their education. The current minimum number of days, 180, was too low before the pandemic, it isn't close to that of high-performing nations. Students and staff need more days coming out of the pandemic. The state legislature should raise modestly the minimum number of days to underscore the need for more time. Even without an increase to the state minimum number of days by the state legislature, there needs to be a layering of additional time at the local school district level. As districts prepare for next year, they need to consider whether all of their students, or especially vulnerable groups of students, including children with profound special needs, beginning English language learners and fledgling readers, among others, need more time, and if so, how much. Some districts will need to add time for all of their students above a statutorily raised state minimum. Some will need to add time for particular groups of students or for particular students. Some will need to do all three. Here are a few considerations regarding more time for local school districts. To what extent will children cover roughly the same material and make roughly the same growth as normally expected? To what extent will they likely not? To what extent were students in in-person instruction? For students with profound special needs, beginning English learners and fledgling or struggling readers, to what extent do their needs require them to have more time next year? To what extent does an entire grade level, where grade levels require additional time, more so than other grade levels? For example, those grade levels in the early elementary, early reader window? To what extent can individual students' needs be met by academic interventions of one sort or another? For example, tutoring, mentoring, or summer school? Child by child, group by group, districts will have to reflect on what is needed and how to meet these needs. More time is the clearest need, most have foregone it, many will need to recoup it. In spite of the great efforts of educators and support staff, given the pandemic and the resultant conditions, more time will be necessary for many of our children next year. More time is necessary, but not sufficient. It needs to be accompanied by continued attention to social and emotional learning, or SEL slash children's mental health, related supports, supplementary use of home technology, not primary use of home technology, but supplementary or secondary use of home technology, continued expansion of critical community partnerships, which have been lifesavers in many cases across communities across our state, and improved literacy. School funding. Board members, last month, you heard a presentation by Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations Kyle Garant that showed that based on the School Finance Research Collaborative Study recommendations, Michigan was underfunding its public schools by more than $3 billion annually. Six studies in six years have said the same thing, we underfund Michigan public education to the detriment of our children. We need a weighted school funding system, consistent with the SFRC's recommendations, to acknowledge and help address the individual needs of individual students in our schools. The recent Federal Coronavirus Relief Act will help districts across the state and country, and with non-recurring funds, will benefit many children in many districts to benefit from improved services next year. Indeed, there will be more new dollars for public education next year in Michigan than in any year in anyone's memory, more than $1.6 billion, of which will be from the Federal Coronavirus Relief Act. Let me say that again lest anyone miss it, there will be more new money in Michigan for public education than in any year in anyone's memory. While enormously beneficial, there are significant limitations to these funds. First, the coronavirus relief funding is non-recurring funding, it isn't available to meet recurring needs. We need recurring revenue to meet the recurring needs of our children. Our children's needs endure, so too should their funding. Second, the federal coronavirus relief funding is lumpy, distributed primarily through the Title I Part A formula, meant to provide funding for compensatory education based on economic disadvantage. As such, to provide a reasonable base increase for all children in Michigan, especially given the long-term persistent underfunding noted so clearly in the SFRC study and others, the state legislature will have to supplement the federal funding. I appreciate the governor's support of a weighted school funding formula, I also appreciate her recognition and that of the House of Representatives, that the recent federal funding, while very helpful, needs to be accompanied by additional state funding as well. The governor and legislature need to work together to finalize this school funding supplemental so that school districts can timely plan for next year to meet children's needs. It doesn't mean passage of a supplemental in June, it doesn't mean passage of a supplemental in September, it means passage of a supplemental in the next two months. As I shared with a joint legislative committee last week, we need to strengthen our supports for children, both social and emotional and academic. I advocate- I advocated for at least a doubling of children's mental health funding last week. Additionally, I noted the need for more social workers, counselors, nurses, and psychologists, as well as lower class sizes at the early elementary level where teachers are working with children to establish literacy and numeracy foundations. We need recurring revenue, not one-and-done funding for recurring needs. I say this both to federal and state lawmakers. What does each child need? How do we provide it? As educators and policymakers wrestle with the broad policy questions of how to pivot to a new, better normal at the state and national levels in education, these will be the important questions at the local level. Thank you for the opportunity to share thoughts, board. We're open to questions and comments from board members. So I'm looking in the chat. I may have put my board to sleep. Maybe not. I see evidence of awakenedness out there. That's a good thing. Questions, comments? Okay. Dr. Pugh, and then Ms. Lipton.
Cincy wants to talk. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yes, ma'am.
I hear an echo, so I think I'm going to go out and come back in after this. But my question is, and you and I have talked about this a little bit, is that can you speak to the... You talked about the number of schools who are in session, and 23% that are not fully remote. Is that... Is there any way that we can break that down by race and ethnicity?
So we have pretty good data monthly, and the data is... The data analysis is as good as the data entry. So we are able to show by urbanness of districts, urban, suburban, and rural, who is in session and who is not, by number of students, who is in session and who is not. And I'll share the epic MSU, the MSU epic report on that with the board. I believe you've received some of their reports in the past. I'll share their most recent report again so that you're able to see it. But in general, the conclusions that I shared with you are the conclusions from that report, namely that the larger the district, the less likely to have in-person instruction. And I might add, the phenomena that I am sharing with you are not simply Michigan phenomena. They are national phenomena. The larger the district, the larger the school, the less likely to be in in-person instruction. The more urban, the less likely to be in in-person instruction. Schools that educate larger percentages of working class and poor children, less likely on average, this is all on average, Dr. Pugh, less likely to be in in-person instruction. And again, on average, the greater the percentage of children of color, less likely to be in in-person instruction. And as you're aware, a lot of those factors correlate, and so it's not necessarily the intention to have remote instruction because of a given population. One can imagine, I would imagine, that so much of these numbers are driven by the size of the school and the size of the district. And if you are more likely to go to a school or a district that is larger, your district is less likely to have been in session. Okay? There are lots of... There are exceptions to this, of course, but these are the broad strokes of the most recent MSU epic report from January 19th. There'll be a new report coming out roughly the same day each month, roughly the 19th, 20th, or so of every month. We'll get updates. As you may recall, in the Return to Learn legislation approved by the state legislature in August, there is a requirement for local school districts to go in front of their boards each month and to share with the board and to have the board affirm or reinform the mode of instruction or the modes of instruction. There is similarly a requirement to report data on modes of instruction, not simply broadly in the district, but for discrete populations within the district. So for example, the vulnerable populations to which I referred earlier. So again, we'll share or reshare the report with the board, but those are the broad strokes of the report. Ms. Lipton?
Yes. I would just like to applaud the, both you and the department for applying for the waiver, again, from standardized testing. I think that there is an abundance of research that tells us that the most important thing that summative assessments oftentimes give us is the socioeconomic neighborhood in which the child is from. And of course, we don't need to spend millions and millions and millions of dollars and time getting that information. I would much rather see the use of teacher-prepared tests, benchmark assessments that are informative. And so I do think that the issuance of the waiver was the right move, and I do hope that the waiver will ultimately get granted. And I also hope that it will perhaps help teach us in this state that we do spend an enormous amount of money and time on testing, federally mandated testing, that, in my opinion and in the opinion of many researchers, is money not well spent or time best spent. So again, I thank the department for requesting the waiver and hope that, in fact, it does get granted and that we do have a national conversation on the wisdom of using these tests as we currently do.
Brief conversation with myself. I apologize. Ms. Lipton, thank you very much. Mr. Bondana.
Thank you. First, I wanted to echo what Board Member Lipton just said with the thank you for the waiver that is so important right now. And as teachers, it's nice to hear those words that affirm that the, at the highest level at our state leadership, you have the best interests of our students and us at heart. So thank you for that, reapplying for that waiver. We appreciate that. I did have one question about the extended year next year that you're proposing, which is, is there within that a proposal for paying the teachers for the additional days worked?
Sure. So I mean, you know clearly that any additional time should be associated with additional compensation, and that would be locally bargained, district by district across the state. But I mentioned time and money together because there is more money available for local school districts next year. There is more money available for local school districts next year as a rule, in aggregate, than in any year in anyone's recent recollection. And I ran this by some old timers. I, of course, see myself as somewhat decrepit as well, but I ran it by some old timers because I said, I don't recall at any time in my career this amount of funding available, new funding available for local public school districts. Is that your feeling as well? And the answer was yes. Now, the dollars are lumpy. They are A, federal. They are B, lumpy. They are C, nonrecurring. They D, require supplementing with state dollars. There are challenges associated therewith, but an analysis of the federal dollars, the 90%, which are required to be distributed by Title I Part A, an analysis of the additional 10%, the aggregate amount, looking at roughly what the governor and the House have talked about supplementing these dollars with, you come to the conclusion that there is substantial funding available to buy time. Now, you can say, well, there are a lot of needs in local school districts. I acknowledge that. I don't think anybody has been louder about the need for more funding and fairer funding than I have in the state. But I'm talking about for this coming year, there are dollars that are available, however challenging, however tricky to use. They are there for the vast majority of districts in the state. With the supplementing of the federal dollars with state dollars, there is the opportunity to extend the amount of time for children. And I just want to be clear, I draw no conclusions about what's necessary in one district versus the other. My point about a slight minimum or modest increase in the state minimum number of days, my point about that is to raise the importance of time. Children have lost it. They need to recoup it in many cases. Now, everybody's not going to recoup it, right? So our high school seniors, they're not going to recoup it. They're going to graduate, and they're going to move on with their lives. They will have missed certain things in their 12th grade year, and that's a shame. Those are not recoupable, if you will. There are high school kids who are similarly going to not recoup things that they will have missed for one reason or another. But particular children and in certain districts, entire districts, are going to need to reflect upon time. The reflection upon time is the most important thing that we can do as educators across the state. I'm not advocating a cookie cutter approach. I'm advocating that everybody think about time. What have kids lost most profoundly? Time. What do they need to add most profoundly? Time. I'm amused by people who have said, and not you, Mr. Bondana, you're too nuanced a thinker, but I'm amused by people who have shared periodically, you know, it's not all about time. Of course, it's not all about time, but that it's not all about time, doesn't it mean that it isn't at all about time? It is in part about time. Similarly, some people have said it's not all about money, but that it's not all about money doesn't mean that it isn't at all about money. It is in part about time and money. They are, in fact, our biggest resources in educating children. So I appreciate the question. I appreciate the clarification. I expect no one to work for free. Thank you. Más preguntas? Plus de question? More questions? Going once and twice, you can't blame a guy for trying. Okay. Hearing no additional questions or comments, we are going to move on in our agenda. The next agenda item is a presentation on Black History Month. February is Black History Month. Today, we have a presentation from professors from Wayne State University. This is an informational presentation and does not require board action. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Ali Johnson, Chair and Professor of the Department of African American Studies at Wayne State University, and Dr. Kofense Chike, Professor in the Department of African American Studies as well at Wayne State University. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Gentlemen, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here. My name is Ali Johnson. I am Chair of the Department of African American Studies at Wayne State University. I have been at Wayne State since 2004, and my area of research focuses on black politics in the United States, the Americas, and the African diaspora. My colleague, Professor Kofense Chike, is a former teacher in Detroit Public Schools. He has a lot of experience teaching in various types of schools, and I'm going to let him do most of the presentation because it is one of his areas of expertise. I wanted to thank all of you for having us. We appreciate the honor and privilege to share what we know and what we think about Black History Month. I especially wanted to thank Tiffany, Marilyn, Jennifer, and Karen for working with us to make our visit to you and make our presentation possible. I want to emphasize that now more than ever, we believe that more black studies in K through 12 education is needed, not only in Michigan, not only in the United States, but around the world. The recent events, the events of the last year have been sobering and, in some instances, frightening. I want to say that we believe that infusion of more accurate information and analysis about the black experience can lead to a better-informed, more culturally sensitive, and academically sophisticated population. We believe that teachers like Jaman Jordan and institutions like the Charles H. Wright Museum of African American History here in the city of Detroit are working to educate the population about black folks. This improved understanding of the black experience means that we will have a more accurate history of everybody. We know that it may be difficult for some to embrace a more inclusive approach to social studies, but we believe that it's worth the effort. It is no coincidence that white racism can take implicit and explicit forms. Knowledge and understanding are antidotes to white supremacist groups such as Oath Keepers, QAnon, Proud Boys, neo-Nazis, neo-Confederates, and militia groups. At this point, I would like to ask for the next slide and pass the presentation off
Is Dr. Chike with us? Marilyn, is Dr. Chike with us?
Apparently not. I'm not hearing him.
Okay. And I'm not... And Dr. Pugh has noted that she's not seeing slides, nor I.
Nor am I. Dr. Johnson, are you able to continue with the presentation?
Yes, but...
Dr. Johnson, if I could, please, for one second. Marilyn, could we see the slides, please?
Mark Howe. We have a backup plan. Mark Howe should be able to project them. So we're going to be here. Take us a moment to shift, but we'll be able to do it.
And Mark Howe is ready to go. Mark Howe is almost ready to go.
You take your time because Dr. Johnson is working on Dr. Chike, and you work on the PowerPoint. We'll pull it together.
The slides are there. Can you see them?
Yes. Thank you.
Whoops.
Hello, Kofense? And you heard what I said?
Marilyn, are we in touch with Dr. Chike?
Dr. Johnson, were you just speaking with Dr. Chike?
Yes, and I asked him to call Marilyn, that she would be able to solve this problem. But he also asked if there is a number that he can call in to participate because he is having some...
He's calling me now, I will give him that, thank you.
Okay.
He should be calling in any minute now.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Dr. Chike.
Good morning, how are you?
We're well. If you could continue with the presentation, that would be most appreciated, thank you.
Okay, is the PowerPoint up?
It is. Mark Howe is displaying the PowerPoint. So as you go through, if you say next, continue to do that, it is displayed.
Which slide should we be on, Dr. Chike?
Okay, I think Dr. Johnson started with Slide 1, so we can start with Slide 2, please.
Okay, thank you.
Are we ready?
Yes.
All right, thank you, and I apologize for the glitch. And I'm going to try to get through this quick because I know time is of the essence. Black History Month was founded by Kyler G. Woodson, and it actually started as Negro History Week in 1926. So this is 95 years later. And the idea was to dispel mythological information about African American history and culture. Dr. Woodson also, around the same time, created the Nick Journal of Negro History in 1915, which was the first academic journal to document and chronicleize the history and lives of people of African descent. He also founded at the same time a professional organization called the Association for the Study of African American History and Life. It was originally called the Association for the Study of Negro History. His organization was national and had a very large chapter in Michigan, which provided Black History Month programs annually and supplemental African American history programs in local schools, churches, and community centers. You can go to the next slide, please. Dr. Woodson's efforts were not solely directed towards people of African descent. Much of what we think we know about each other as diverse citizens of this country is fueled by fear, ignorance, and misunderstanding. These factors often accompany prejudice, discrimination, and implicit bias, which often demonstrated in racism and even sometimes violence. And I'd like to go to the next slide, please. So we should be at Slide 4, and this is... I'm trying to catch up here. So when we look at things like ignorance, fear, and misunderstanding, of course, in the past year or two, we've seen heightened incidents that, in my opinion or in my opinion, demonstrate the ignorance, fear, and misunderstanding associated with people of various cultures not being aware of and having accurate information about the history and culture of other people. You can proceed to the next slide, please. And of course, the previous slide was the incident where George Floyd, his life was lost. We also saw this year in Michigan, two incidents, and one could possibly be the foreshadowing for what would happen on January 6. But we know in both of these incidents as well, though the major focus may not have been a lack of information or ignorance and misunderstanding as it pertains to diversity and culture. To some degree, that was an element of what drove people to commit these actions. So and of course, we have two slides, as I said. We have the incident that happened at the Capitol in Michigan, when people had set out in efforts to challenge and ultimately try to kidnap Governor Gretchen. And then we are very familiar with, or to some degree, the incident that happened at the Capitol of the country. Would you go to the next slide, please? So, Dr. Woodson's mission serves as a foundation for culturally relevant education in African-centered education. And I hope you can see the slide. I'll just read it. And Black History Month and culturally relevant education, there are seven principles for culturally responsive teaching, which are aspects of both African-centered education and culturally relevant education. And these include students are firm in their cultural connections, teachers are personally inviting, learning environments are physically and culturally inviting, students are reinforced for academic development, instructional changes are made to accommodate differences in learning, classrooms, classroom is managed with firm, consistent loving control, and seven, interaction stress, collectivity, as well as individuality. And if you could proceed to the next slide, please. And in Slide 6, this is a picture of two of Detroit's African-centered schools. One was called Aisha Shule, which was the first African-centered school established in Detroit, actually in the state, and it was established by a committed educator, Mommy Mighty Humphrey, who established the school in 1972. And the school was originally founded as a private school. And this effort, and just let me back up. African-centered education became very prevalent growing out of the Black Power era of the 1960s, which emerged out of the Civil Rights Movement. At the beginning of that period, educators across the country, African-American educators, had a series of conferences, symposies to discuss what was the best way to educate children of African descent. And there was basically a major division. Should we do it in the public schools and try to change the public schools to be more accommodating of African-Americans and brown children? Or should we create a private school system? So I have these two slides up because Aisha Shule was founded as an independent private school. And by 1990, Detroit Public Schools Board, with the support of the community, began to institute African-centered schools within DPS. And this idea of African-centered education is a form of culturally relevant education. So if we can go to the next slide, please. From 1989 to 2000, and this is just a kind of a generic picture of a Detroit public school classroom, but from around 1989 to 2000, there were heightened efforts by Detroit Public Schools under the guidance of Kay Lovelace, Deborah McGriff, and David Snead, specifically to implement a host of efforts to facilitate education that was relevant to and spoke directly to the need of the majority of the students in the Detroit Public School System. And some of these efforts included very intensive teacher-based study groups. So you had groups of teachers at various schools that came together on their own time, oftentimes using their own resources to collaborate and discuss what things they could do to make the teaching and learning better and more effective, and more specifically speak to the need of the children. There also, for about 11 years, there was a conference held that Detroit DPS sponsored called the Black Child Conference. And for this conference, they brought in the leading scholars on culturally relevant education, African-centered education. This was a very important and popular conference. And it influenced a lot of teachers. Also, there was the establishment of the African-centered education academies. And this started at, there was a task force created of educators, I think, in 1989. And their charge was to find ways to be able to develop educational pedagogy, curriculum, strategies, and techniques that would specifically speak to the fact that a significant number of African-American males were not being successful, particularly in the early grades. In fact, there's an abundance of research that young African-American males at about the fourth grade began to disengage from school. A result of this task force was that the DPS should create three, they started out as African-centered culturally relevant male academies. There was a lawsuit filed, which forced the DPS to have to make the schools unisex or available to both genders. These schools were the Paul Robinson Academy, the Malcolm X Academy, and the Marcus Garvey Academy. And the spearhead educator of this effort was Dr. Clifford Watson, who at the time was the principal at Woodward Academy. And ultimately, the Detroit Board of Education, over time, increasingly did things to implement this culturally relevant and African-centered education and pedagogy within the curriculum. At one point, they went from three schools to 11 schools that were designated as this type of school. And ultimately, they would resolve all of the school in the social studies curriculum. And to the degree that it could be implemented, it would also become a part of the STEM curriculum as well. And a lot of political things would ultimately lead to the decline of this effort. And we can go to the last slide. And I want to thank you for allowing us to come and talk to you today. And our contention as professors and lecturers in the Department of African American Studies, Department at Wayne State, and I've also worked in several departments in the area and other parts of the country, as well as been a K through 12 educator for about 20 years. But our assertion and the purpose of this presentation is to assert that through African American Studies, Black History Month, which is really kind of the origin of a lot of this or the impetus in culturally relevant education, we can at least begin to chip away at the problems that we see immersed in our society that can be directly related to fear, ignorance, and misunderstanding. And I've found in the classes that I've taught, I've also taught at U of M, Michigan State, and had a very diverse population of students, that most of what we know about people that are not like us comes through a filter of either our parents, the media, and what I've found in my teaching and learning as a teacher, that things change when people begin to have more accurate and firsthand experiences with people that are not like them. Again, I'd like to thank you very much. And that concludes my presentation, and I will gladly answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Chike. If board members have an interest in questions and comments, please indicate either in the chat or physically. Ms. Lipton is old school, so she's got her physical hand up. And I see Ms. Tiffany Tilly, she's on deck.
Thank you so much, Professors Johnson and Chike. The question I have is, my recollection is that when the state engaged in the state takeover of Detroit Public Schools, the very first schools that were closed down by the emergency manager were the Afrocentric schools that you referred to in your presentation. Do you have an update, or can you give us any insight into whether there are any efforts by DPS to reestablish those schools that had been closed down by the emergency manager?
Okay, this is Dr. Chike. Those efforts to close the schools were not immediate, and there was some pushback. Several of the schools were closed under the guise of budget issues. There is, two of the schools, the foundational schools within DPS were, as I said, Marcus Garvey, Malcolm X, and Paul Robinson. And those three schools still exist, but what they did, Marcus Garvey is still in existence. And they combined Paul Robinson and Malcolm X Academy. But you're correct, there seems to have been a degree of to abandon the whole strategy. And those are the only schools that would be formally identified as African-centered schools. Aisha Shule, which was the founder or the beginning of this, would ultimately become a charter school in about 13 years after becoming chartered. Unfortunately, they lost their charter. There's one other school that I think may be chartered by DPS, and that's the Timbuktu Academy, which recently changed its name to the Barack Obama Leadership Academy. In terms of efforts to maybe revitalize this approach to education, I have not seen it. I have seen in a quote where Dr. Beatty said he was in support of it. But other than that, I haven't seen any efforts actually being acted out or carried out to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Tilly, Dr. Pugh.
Thank you, gentlemen, so much for coming and giving this presentation and sparking this conversation. And I want to thank Hester Willer, too, for referring you guys to me to come speak today. I thought it was really important for Black History Month that we have these types of conversations about, surrounded about curriculum. You know, what are our students learning in school? And what they're learning as African-American students definitely helps with their self-efficacy. When I was growing up, you know, in school, we were learning that we were slaves. And MLK, you know, it wasn't a rich curriculum when it came to African-American Studies or Black History. When I was a substitute teacher, I taught at Ayesha Shuley, I taught at Timbuktu. And my children, when they were younger, they attended Enseroma, Enseroma under Baba Malik Yakimi. And so they got an opportunity to really get a rich understanding of their culture, which was so important with their identity. And beyond African-American students, like you said, there are so many misunderstandings. A lot of times in this country, we're having a lot of conflicts because of misunderstandings, not understanding the other person, the relevance of their culture, and so many biases creep in. But it's important that all students learn about African-American culture. We are so embedded together. It's so embedded in American history. And I think there are so many positive aspects that just get overlooked or, you know, whether it's purposefully or not at times. And so how do we get it into the classroom, not just in the African-American centered schools? But how do we help teachers to identify curriculums that will work in their classroom? Identify ways for them to have good delivery of the curriculum?
Well, the very, the initial phase for that, in my opinion, is without it being mandated or written into or structured into the state curriculum, that the teachers would have to want to do it. And that, in fact, is what led to this movement. The whole idea of African-centered education evolved from the efforts of a few people to a full-ledge movement. And the materials, curriculum materials were not there. People created curriculum materials in a similar fashion as how African-American Studies evolved from a academic discipline that emerged out of social disobedience and righteous indignation that the curriculum being facilitated in institutions of higher learning give a correct portrayal of the history of the culture of people of African descent. But there needs to be a greater degree of buy-in from school boards like this one. And it's typically thought that African-centered education solely focuses on self-esteem, but that's simply not true. We focus on the STEM subjects as well on critical thinking and all the other skills related to just academic success and academic excellence. So first, I think we would have to get teachers and educators to buy in. And from the administrative level, it needs to come from school boards. As we know, there are standards and benchmarks. And I've found that the most effective African-centered educators that I know would very carefully align their lesson plans and their pedagogical approaches and whatnot to be in alignment with the standards and benchmarks. Because part of the challenge, the challenge is not just to educate a child in one way. The idea, and this is the increasing challenge, how do we align what it is we're trying to teach? And what it is we want to teach and how we teach it in a way that doesn't negate or doesn't negate what is required by the state. But in a major way, I think the state would have, there would have to be buy-in by the state and even, you know, the federal school board requirement. I hope that wasn't too much of a long-winded answer and that I at least broached answering your question.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chike. And Ms. Tilly, Dr. Pugh.
Good morning. That was great information. Thank you, Board Member Tilly, and to the presenters for presenting this information. My question was partially answered by the previous question. And then my other thought is just thinking about Nikole Hannah-Jones's 1619 Project that the previous administration tried to defund. Is that a vehicle? I do definitely hear your policy conversation. But as it relates to the 1619 Project, is that anything that you see that could be used as well that would be helpful, a helpful framework?
I think that would be an excellent framework, particularly for people that may not be, that may be trying to start from scratch. I think it's an excellent framework and it was an excellent effort. And along with the original project, they created curriculum materials that could be easily implemented by teachers. So I think it's excellent. And just kind of going back to kind of the policy idea which you mentioned, the last administration tried to push back by coming out with a counter so-called curriculum. I don't know if people were familiar. I think they call it the 1776 Project or something like that. And it was clear from looking at it that the people who tried to respond to the 1619 Project had not really, either they were not educated and they really didn't understand curriculum and pedagogy, or they didn't really, or both. They may not have really read completely the 1619 Project and understood it. So, but it was just an effort to push back. And I understand if they didn't pass a law or a policy, they were trying to pass policies to eradicate the 1619 Project. But in short, and I'm sorry for being long-winded, I think it's a very good starting place for all educators.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Thank you, Dr. Chike. Other questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from board members? I see Mr. Strayhorn. Is that a prelude to a question or a comment?
Well, hey, you know, I'll make a comment. You know, I just want to applaud both professors for the presentation. I think it was phenomenal. I think this is an area that we lack in. I think about myself, you know, you know the statistics with children, especially Black and Brown children, when they see people that look like them in positions of power and authority, it really improves their outlook on life and their success. You know, astronomically. You know, when you look at, I think about my old ball coach, Nick Saban, he talked about self-imposed limitations. Like people had self-imposed limitations to where they couldn't see themselves as something bigger than what they really are because they have a cage over their head, he used to talk about. And I think that with education, you know, when you look at, you know, things like knowing the stories and people who have come before us that were in positions of power, and as Tiffany said, we were raised on, hey, we were all slaves before. That brings a certain sediment type of mentality. I think that if you understand that, yes, there has been successful people, that it does take that cage off of the young person's head. It makes them stretch, just like an animal does or an amphibian does in a cage. Like the larger the cage, the bigger the animal will grow. Right? These are not animals. It's the mind, a human mind does grow bigger when they see possibility. It helped me in my life. It helps a lot of people that I've seen that are in, you know, minority people in their lives as well to be able to see the possibility. So I think that this is the beginning of a true identity shift with those children so that they can have a better future. And I just applaud you guys for doing this. And I think that adding this and having the discussion and having policy set for the local school district to be able to implement this into curriculum, core curriculum, I think is a great thing for the advancement in future so people can understand one another better and then get along better.
Thank you, Mr. Strayhorn. I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions from board members? For Dr. Johnson or Dr. Chike? Just one or two additions, I'm sorry, Dr. Johnson.
Yes, I would just like to, again, thank you for having us. We really appreciate it. And I want to emphasize that, as you know, education goes beyond the schools. And Professor Chike and I teach Black History Month every month of the year, every day of the year. So we go to schools and community groups in Detroit and around the state with our message of information and education. But I have good news and bad news. I want to call people's attention to the new movie coming out Friday, Judas and the Messiah, about the Black Panther Party, one of the most important Black political organizations last years. They had an important education program. And they were very inclusive in their approach and their efforts to make positive change. I encourage everyone to check it out. The bad news is, I read this morning in an article in the Washington Post that families in Utah had requested that their kids be allowed to opt out or not participate in Black History Month events and lessons. And so the reality is that even if we get administrative support and teacher support for a more inclusive education, we still may get resistance from the community and from the family. And so we've got to embrace that challenge with love and understanding because, again, we feel that it's so devastating when folks don't have the full picture of the African-American experience and the experience of other communities. And so I just feel that we have a lot of work ahead of us. And just appreciate the opportunity to share with you. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Just a couple of words of follow-up. First of all, I want to thank Doctors Johnson and Chike for their presentation today. It was rich. It was thought-provoking. It's the beginning. It's not the end of our reflection in this area. And I would very much like the opportunity to meet with our two professors and to share some thoughts for next steps and then to raise those with the board moving forward. Because I do think that there's a lot that we can do, a lot more that we can do collectively in this space. I would be remiss if I did not say just a word on what Mr. Strayhorn said. You know, it's hard for a Buckeyes fan to be supportive of a Nick Saban quote, particularly after the beating that Alabama put on the Buckeyes just a few weeks ago. But the Nick Saban quote is a powerful quote. And it's to the point of you're thinking about your own capability. You know, Henry Ford once said, whether you think you can or think you can't, you're probably right. And if we raise up our children to believe that they are capable, then they are more likely to be capable. If we raise them up otherwise, they are less likely to be capable. And to the reflections that two of you made about the power of who teaches our children, one, and what they teach our children, two, those are areas that we can grow in the state of Michigan, both in terms of who teaches our children and by extension, what they're thinking about the world is, what their lens on the world is and what they're teaching our young people. So there are a lot of reflections to be had. This was tremendously thought-provoking as a beginning with our board on this subject. But I emphasize the importance of the word "beginning." Not an end, not a one-and-done, but a beginning on this subject. So Dr. Johnson and Dr. Chike, if you would indulge me, I'd very much like the opportunity to speak with you subsequent to this meeting. So if you get an outreach from Karen Carefoot, that's my executive assistant, would love to talk with you. Thank you. Appreciate the conversation. We appreciate you. Have a great day, gentlemen.
You, too. Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is a presentation by Safe Water Engineering in the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. This two-part presentation focuses on safe water and air in schools. This is an informational presentation, does not require board action. The first presenter is Ms. Elan Batanzo, founder of Safe Water Engineering. She will be followed by a team from the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, otherwise known with the very best acronym in history, EAGLE. Those three are Ms. Regina Strong, the environmental justice public advocate; Ms. Nina Sassy, clean water public advocate; and Ms. Holly Golkey, school drinking water coordinator in the Drinking Water and Environmental Health Division. Ms. Batanzo, thank you for joining us. You may begin.
And Mark Howe, if you could. Mark Howe will project this PowerPoint, too. Thank you for your help, Mark.
And I'm on the phone. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Excellent. Okay, well, thank you so much for inviting me to speak today. My name is Elan Batanzo. I'm a water quality engineer with 20 years of experience in the drinking water field. I am speaking today about water quality in schools, both as a parent and as a water quality expert. Water quality in schools quickly deteriorates when buildings are closed for weekends, breaks, summers, but especially during the extended shutdowns experienced during this pandemic. The Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy has provided guidance for flushing to restore school water quality. But schools need a consistent and clear message at state and local levels about the importance of taking action to restore water quality and the steps schools need to take to provide safe water for all students and educators as they return to buildings. Without concrete direction on what must be done to restore water quality, schools take a do-what-we-can or a nothing-at-all approach that may not be sufficient to protect children's health. So, next slide. The video on my screen is not synced with real life, so I'm not, I don't even see my slides up right now. Could somebody confirm that my slides are working?
They are up.
Excellent. So we should be looking at a slide that says Birmingham Public Schools at the top. And I want to share my experience in the Birmingham Public Schools, where I'm a parent of an elementary and middle school student. Although I am doing some work to help with their water quality issues, I am speaking to you today as a parent and a water quality expert, but not on behalf of the school district. Birmingham was running the water off and on in school buildings throughout the summer and fall because they know that water quality degrades when it sits in the pipe. They collected water samples for Legionella, lead, and copper in the fall to protect the students and staff. Despite running the water through the shutdown, Birmingham confirmed through water sampling that water quality had deteriorated. Lead and copper were found throughout the school buildings. Extensive Legionella contamination was found in middle school and high school buildings. These are the buildings with the more complex plumbing systems. And Legionella was also found scattered throughout the elementary schools. Legionella pneumophila, the strain that most commonly causes disease, was found in three of our schools. This data set demonstrates that random flushing doesn't provide reliable water quality. At worst, it can move poor water quality around a school and even spread contamination. Next slide. Due to inherent delays in Legionella lab analysis, Birmingham received sampling results in the midst of returning to reopening schools in January after 10 months of shutdown. The timing was unfortunate. Legionella is a naturally Legionella is a naturally occurring in the environment, but it can flourish in stagnant warm water. Exposure risk is through inhalation or aspiration of water droplets. Legionella exposure can cause Legionnaires' disease and Pontiac fever. The symptoms of Legionnaires' disease and Pontiac fever overlap significantly with COVID. And like COVID, Legionella can also be deadly. When we measure Legionella growing in our water systems, we know that other potentially harmful microorganisms may be growing there, too. So, we need to address Legionella in water to reduce the risk of exposure during showering, hand washing, kitchen use, common activities in schools that can generate a spray. When we address Legionella, we ensure that water is microbially safe for drinking. So, in Birmingham, the Birmingham Public School District went straight to work to address the Legionella contamination. They implemented a hyperchlorination treatment as students were returning to the buildings. And they had to consider using portable sinks for hand washing to control COVID while treating for Legionella. But in the end, Birmingham was able to squeeze in the hyperchlorination treatment before students returned, so they didn't have a need for portable sinks in the end. But the schedule is very tight, and this added to the tremendous logistics of getting students and educators safely back into the school. Water sampling, remediation, and risk mitigation for Legionella is ongoing in the Birmingham School District. Next slide. This is, should have "Lead in School Water" as the title on the slide. Lead and copper sampling in the Birmingham schools turned up several lead detections throughout all the school buildings. Lead is a potent irreversible neurotoxin. According to the CDC, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the World Health Organization, there's no safe level of lead exposure. We find lead in school water because we have lead throughout most of our plumbing. Materials marked "lead-free" could contain up to 8% lead up until 2014. And even now, lead-free plumbing contains up to 0.25% lead. Lead gets into the water when water is in contact with lead. Lead contamination can be addressed in the short term by bringing water from home or providing bottled water in schools. In our situation, Birmingham has filter stations that are being used as soon as the microbial water quality issues are addressed throughout each school. Even though sporadic high lead levels were detected in schools throughout the district, all the filter station samples had no detectable lead. The lead results in Birmingham demonstrate that from tap to tap and sample to sample, you never know when or where you will find a high-lead result. Filter stations certified to reduce lead in water are very reliable for providing a lead-free source of drinking water to students and educators. Drinking water filter stations should be considered as a long-term strategy for providing lead-free drinking water in schools until we can reach a long-term goal of getting lead out of all of our school plumbing. I don't have time to talk about this here today, but the Michigan Legislature is considering a bill to install filter stations in schools and childcares to provide safe water in schools. And I have a resource slide at the end where you can find more information about this. Next slide. Schools need to take action now. I think we can all agree that when schools open, we want them to have their undivided attention on two things: educating students and minimizing the spread of COVID. We don't need other problems cropping up and distracting from these essential missions. It is critical to manage school water quality and ensure that water quality in the building is not another health risk for students and educators when they enter the building. Legionella, microbial growth, lead, and copper all present real health risks for children and educators now and into the future. Schools need to move the water through a systematic flushing plan that brings fresh water into the building and uses the fresh water to push the old water out. This work needs to start before sampling. We should use sampling, then, to verify that the flushing is effective and determine whether additional treatment steps are necessary. When it comes to typical water operations, school facility staff are focused on maintaining the plumbing. They have less experience managing the water quality, particularly because we have no requirements for school water safety in schools that get their water from a public water system, which is the majority of schools in Michigan. During COVID, schools are needing to reinvent everything about how they do business to keep students and educators safe on a weekly or even daily basis. The water is another burden on top of every other challenge they are facing right now. So, it must be as clear and as simple as possible for schools to implement a water quality management plan in the midst of all the current challenges. Schools need some hand-holding and spoon-feeding to make this as easy as possible. Next slide. So, what schools need, we need clear direction and support. Schools need clear leadership at the state level. This can come in the form of a guidance memo from the state superintendent laying out the steps schools must take to restore water quality and provide safe water to reduce water quality risks. EAGLE has developed several tools that schools should be implementing now and ongoing into the future to restore and maintain water quality in school buildings. These materials need to be shared early and often to ensure the guidance is implemented. It's not enough to just run the water. Schools need to follow the guidance to ensure flushing is beneficial. Schools need training on maintaining water quality. This is not an area that schools are used to addressing. Proactive water quality management in schools will be a new strategy for most. Schools need support to do this work. Many don't have a staff to produce a drinking water management plan. They need access to financial resources to design and plan these programs. But luckily, drinking water management plans are a long-term investment that they will be able to use over and over. There is an urgent need to address school water quality right now during this pandemic. The planning work and implementation now and continuing into the future will protect students and educators for years to come. Next slide. So, what educators and families need, we need clear communication and safe water. Educators and families need clear information about the safety of school buildings and school water as they return and send children back to the classroom. Educators and students need to have a source of safe drinking water at school, and they need to know where to find it. For schools with filter stations, change the filters and remind everyone that those filter stations are meant to be used. In some cases, schools may need to consider providing bottled water temporarily until a water quality management plan can be implemented. Schools should communicate whether a drinking water management plan has been implemented in the school, and if data has been collected, it should be shared with the school community. If a drinking water management plan has not been implemented, building users should know so they can take precautions to protect themselves when they are in schools. Because transparency helps to build trust. And I just want to point out, my final slide there is a list of resources, and you'll be getting a copy of this presentation and the link, so you can explore those on your own at your leisure. So, thank you very much for letting me speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Batanzo. And now our representatives from EAGLE Police, Ms. Strong, Ms. Sassy, and Ms. Golkey.
Hi, this is Holly Golkey, and I will be presenting first. And I'm going to pull up my, I'm going to share my screen and pull up my presentation. I apologize for not having camera action, but I am remote, and I don't have that capability at this time. So, if you can let me know when my presentation is up.
It is visible.
Great, thanks. Okay, so, I'd like to thank you for inviting me and just wanted to let you know that I am the School Drinking Water Coordinator for the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, or, as you described, EAGLE. And it's my understanding that I'm here to share the efforts that EAGLE has on take, has been taking on water in schools during the pandemic. I have a very brief presentation here, along with, which will talk about resources, outreach efforts, and concerns that we have with drinking water at schools. And at the end, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions. Elan did a very good job of introducing the issue with school drinking water previously here. So, first, I want to mention that EAGLE does have a school drinking water program. It's within the Lead and Copper Unit of the Community Drinking Water Supply Program in the Drinking Water and Environmental Health Division. It's my role to assist administrators when it comes to drinking water quality within the school building. And just to let you know, this program is non-regulatory. To give you a little perspective, some schools have their own water source and are classified as a public water supplier. Other schools get their water from a community water supplier and are considered a customer of that supply. EAGLE has regulatory authority through the Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act, which is Act 399 of 1976, over schools with their own source or over the community water supplier. All public water suppliers are required to follow the rules and regulations to provide the safe water source. Schools that are connected to a community water supply are not required by Act 399 to monitor or ensure the quality of water within their buildings. The municipality must follow the safe drinking water to deliver the safe water to the school building. But water within the building can change. Certain plumbing materials, a lack of proper system maintenance, water non-use can negatively affect the water quality within a building. The municipality does not have the authority over personal property or the plumbing within a building. That's the responsibility of the plumbing owner to maintain that water quality within its premise. So, the resources that EAGLE has is based on lead and copper in drinking water. But we do have concern about other water quality in general. We just, right now, are focused on the lead and copper. We have a website with tools that help, that can help administrators provide healthy drinking water. Elan touched on that a bit. And these tools include information on water stagnation, restoring water quality after extended shutdowns, maintenance that's needed system-wide or at specific taps, and flushing guidance, flushing methods, lead testing, and then links to other related resources. We also have been providing outreach regarding drinking water during this pandemic to school administrators via email, gov delivery, and some tweets. We work with staff in the Department of Education and the Department of Health and Human Services, as well as with local health departments and community water suppliers. So, together, we can help any school that reaches out to us. The health risks to those who consume the water in buildings that have been closed or partially closed for extended periods, especially for children, is real. When water doesn't move through the system on a daily basis, it becomes stagnant. The longer it's stagnant, the greater the increase of problems. And if you throw in old plumbing, dead-end lines, poor system maintenance with stagnant water, you greatly increase the health risks. Water stagnation is the biggest factor for dissolving soft metals like lead or copper into the drinking water or the growth of harmful bacteria. And stagnant water also affects the aesthetic quality of drinking water. People may think that water quality problems only come from old pipes. However, you can have brand-new plumbing but still have water quality issues due to excessive stagnation. Not only are there concerns about stagnation in the drinking water system during a pandemic, but the concern continues during what we call "normal times." We cannot forget that. Typical school-building water use, or non-use, I guess I could say, of extended weekends and extended breaks contributes to sitting, to the water sitting in the plumbing system for days, weeks, and possible months. So, when we talk about efforts needed for safe water or safe drinking water during this pandemic, these efforts need to continue into the future. So, what is EAGLE asking schools to do right now? I know schools have a lot on their plate, and the big focus is the pandemic. But when children and staff are back in the building, they also need to have access to healthy water. Schools cannot rely on children bringing water from home. They need to provide it. The easiest thing administrators can do right now is to make sure the water moves through the system to all taps on a regular basis, whether staff or students are in the building or not. Moving water prevents stagnation. This is by far the most important and cost-effective strategy in reducing and keeping stagnant water out of the system. It also keeps other maintenance costs down. In the long run, schools need to have a water quality management plan that includes routine water system flushing, cleaning of aerators and water-use devices, replacing filters, and general plumbing maintenance on a regular basis. Testing should also be done, as Elan suggested, to make sure that the efforts are being effective. So, that's the end of my presentation, and I'd like to thank you for your attention. I have my contact information here and a link to the school water website, which has the tools for administrators. And I don't know if you want to have questions now or after the other gals are finished with their presentation.
We'd like, thank you very much, Ms. Golkey. We'd like Ms. Sassy and Ms. Strong to be able to share their remarks as well, and then we'll do Q and A for everybody.
Good morning. Holly, would you please, would you mind sharing your screen and advancing the slides for us?
Oh, okay, sure.
Thank you. So, while Holly's doing that, I'm going to take some time. I know we only have 15 minutes that we're sharing here. My name's Naina Sassy, and I head the Office of the Clean Water Public Advocate. My office was essentially created by Governor Whitmer just to improve transparency regarding water quality, to really help support communities and make sure that, again, we're here and we're connecting the dots and supporting you in every way that we can. Holly, are you able to get that up? Okay. Well, I'm going to keep going just for the sake of time. So, with that being said, I'm here primarily just to let you know that you have a Clean Water Public Advocate for the state of Michigan. And as you think about this, and you think about all the things that we're asking you to do, and knowing that you have a lot of things that you're prioritizing, I'm here just to drive a few facts home, and again, to let you know that you have the support of my office. So, great, the slide is up. So, I have a slide here that really talks about the priorities of the office and what we've been doing. And so, again, the Office of the Clean Water Public Advocate just ensures that drinking water concerns are investigated and that trends are analyzed. And based on this trend analysis and recommendations, laws, rules, and regulations and procedures will be made. Holly mentioned, again, that water, you know, the water regulation or water testing isn't regulated at this point, but we know that it's something important that needs to be prioritized. And so, I want to hear from you if there's any barriers into testing or doing any of these things that we're asking you to do in regards to developing a flushing protocol. That's where you can reach out to me. So, again, two key takeaways for school administrators, you know, as you think about these presentations about drinking water, you know, Elan really spoke from a parent perspective and what happened in Birmingham. happened in Birmingham. Keep in mind, there are a lot of schools that cannot afford to have that testing, and, you know, Birmingham had the testing and was able to identify it. There are schools that aren't testing. So know that, again, my office is here to help connect you with resources. I don't want that to be a barrier for testing and developing these protocols. Again, we've said it quite a few times already, we know that you have to prioritize a lot of things as you think about that transition to in-person instruction. And we know that there's going to be several models that are employed. So whether you're, you know, you're doing a hybrid approach, or you've already had some folks in your school, we really want you to make sure that you're addressing water concerns, so that we're not layering potential water contamination on top of, you know, COVID-related concerns. So Holly, you can advance it. So my next slide just really drives you to my website. Again, I really want to serve as that hub of information and connecting you to the appropriate program areas. So you can access my site by going to michigan.gov/cleanwater. There's a lot of great information on here that provides a basis on, you know, water quality, what to look for. It really has that residential perspective, but know that, again, we're going to be doing a lot more on building that out and providing some supplemental school information. But for now, there's a wealth of information, as Holly has mentioned, on the school drinking water program on her website. So make sure that you check that out. There was one last thing I wanted to drag on. I'm going pretty quickly because I know we're sharing this 15 minutes. So that was Elin's presentation about Legionella, and then again, Holly really talking about lead and copper. If you take anything from this, know that there are different programs out there that are supportive. Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is really helpful, and they've helped Elin and Birmingham schools during the process of mitigating the Legionella contamination in their water source. But sometimes the barrier is that we have all of these state programs, and we're not sure which particular program to reach out to. And that's where I really want to say, you can use me as that primary contact, and I can connect you with the appropriate program staff. But any questions that you have, feel free to reach out to me. We're here to support. This should definitely be prioritized. Thanks for your time. The next slide just has my contact information. Again, check out the website. I have a lot of great information on there from both the residential perspective and just information about how my office is supporting communities throughout Michigan.
Thank you, Ms. Sassi. If we could hear now from Ms. Strong.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm Regina Strong. I'm the Environmental Justice Public Advocate. Thank you, Holly, for advancing the slides. Just wanted to kind of switch our focus a little bit from water to air and air quality inside schools, which is another very important piece to think about as we think about school buildings and children returning to those buildings. Next slide, Holly. Thank you. So just want to give you the framework that, what I'm talking about comes from. As Naina mentioned, her office and my office, they were created by the governor to really focus in on some key issues. And my office focuses on environmental justice, ensuring that all communities, all people have equitable access to our environmental laws, regulations, protections across the board. And in addition to creating the Office of the Environmental Justice Public Advocate, that same executive order created an inter-agency environmental justice response team that Department of Education is part of and several other departments, where we come together and really try to look at how we can increase environmental justice in the state through a variety of means. And one of the things we created early on was four work groups with a response team really focused on research and data, training, communications, and outreach. I always forget the fourth one. It'll come to me in a second. One of the other things we created was the Michigan Advisory Council on Environmental Justice, and that is the state's first environmental justice advisory council, began meeting about a year ago. And we really have a mixture of frontline community, labor representation, tribal representation, environmental organizations, community organizations, and business and industry at that table. And the goal is really to engage with communities. You can go to the next one. Thanks, Holly. And so one of the things, can you advance the slide for me? Thank you. So one of the things that came up early on, particularly as the pandemic started to really hit environmental justice communities particularly hard, was concern around indoor air quality in schools, particularly in certain environmental justice communities where there was already concern about the impact of air quality within the schools. And so that kind of bubbled up from our, Mackey J., as I like to call it, our environmental justice advisory council, to really figure out what could we do to help schools figure out whether the systems within their schools are protective. Next slide, please, Holly. So it started out focused on environmental justice, community schools, born of kind of that need to protect from COVID, protect from other, you know, air quality exposure, potential things that could hurt, like particulate matter and other things that had been, you know, said to potentially carry COVID-19. So we really started looking initially in southwest Detroit and in the 48217 area code, I'm sorry, zip code, looking at the schools that are in that area. How could we do things that were more protective there? Working with our energy office within Eagle, we identified that we needed to look at HVAC systems, because as you may have seen, the higher the number of the filter, the more protective it can be. But there was a whole system within school buildings that are very in age, very in HVAC systems. And so what we came up with was a program that could assess air quality and the HVAC systems within schools and make recommendations about improvements to make it more protective. Next slide for me, Holly. Thanks. So we broadened the perspective to make that assessment opportunity available for all schools around the state. And this is, there is funding available to assist with getting the initial assessment. We're still working to try to identify for schools that are, you know, aren't able to make the improvements, if there might be funding available to assist in that way, and that's still a work in progress. The goal there is when students return to schools that we can make air systems as protective as possible, lessen, you know, carrying the virus throughout the school. So that is, that is the goal. Next slide, please. Thank you. So to date, this really just kicked off in December, and to date, 79 school districts have submitted, kind of, there was an HVAC equipment survey to get a sense of what those districts were facing in their buildings in terms of air systems. 71 schools have submitted requests for assistance, which would cover a little over 100 school buildings at this point. 65 have so far moved forward in the program, and to date, 16 have been actually, excuse me, have actually had the assessment. So one of the things that we've, you know, identified is that with our partners, which, you know, includes the Department of Education, contractors around the state, these are not the only buildings going through this assessment. Restaurants are going through this, they're programmed. So finding contractors is, is one of the barriers right now to moving faster on these assessments because of the sheer demand on the number of contractors out there that can do these HVAC assessments. But we are moving forward, and school systems can still apply, there's still funding available to help with those assessments. So I wanted to be able to share that. And I know I was talking really fast, so if there are questions, I'm happy to answer those when we're at that point. And that is my contact information as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Strong, Ms. Sassi, Ms. Golkey, and Ms. Batanzo. We have a question or questions from Ms. Snyder.
Hi. Thank you very much for the presentation. I just have a few questions, which maybe, not that they have to be answered now, but perhaps in the future would be great. So I know OSHA has quite a bit of, quite a bit to say on indoor air quality. Michigan Building Code has quite a bit to say on water quality. So I'm just curious where the overlap is with what the task force is doing above and beyond maybe what's already in place for code. And then how would that assistance go directly to fulfilling those codes that, that you're talking about safety-wise for air and water for, for kids? And then knowing that there's such a demand on contractors that can do those HVAC assessments, is there, you know, language, if we will, at some point in time where that, those dollars have to be tied to actually fulfilling that assessment, once there's labor available to do such a thing? And to essentially make sure that those, that those dollars are transparent and trackable, if you will? And I have a couple more questions, but I'll probably have to write them down and maybe email them back to you. Thank you again.
Who would, who from, who from Eagle would like to Eagle up?
Well, I tried to write them down. We were going fast. But what I will tell you is, in terms of the air quality funding, that funding is coming directly from the energy office within Eagle. And so that money was set aside to do at least the assessments. What we're trying to identify is, once we share with, you know, a school district the improvements that could happen in a building, if there are other ways that we can help from a funding source, as we know there are a lot of buildings who may need, you know, assistance in this area. Okay, that was one question. I don't know if, I think the other piece on demand on contractors, what I will say is, our energy office is working really hard to, I had a long list of partners, which I didn't go through on the slides, but working with contractors and associations and different departments all across the state to try to put some urgency on this so we can move it forward quickly.
And just, just of note, we appreciate partnering with Eagle enormously.
We appreciate the opportunity to partner.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Snyder, any follow-up, or would you like to share some, some written questions subsequently?
I can, I can share written questions. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Other, other board members, questions or comments? Questions or comments?
I do. I was trying to get it. Hello and Happy New Year, everyone. I am very proud of the work that you all are doing, and I know that this is a lot. It was a lot before. We know that we've advanced a lot, especially post the Flint water crisis. We learned a lot from that, and a lot of the offices have been created as a result of that and the new administration, so kudos there. My question, I have several, I don't even know, I've been writing them everywhere. I guess my question is, just learning so much first and foremost from, from the Flint water crisis, and as it relates to, let me first speak to the water issue, and hopefully Elin's still on the, on the line, and very thorough presentation. As it relates to the filter and flushing, the maintenance of, of the filters, because many schools did put filters on their water systems to address the lead in the water and the copper in the water. And so now, just making sure that that maintenance is, is being taken care of. And so we did a lot of work in Flint. And then just so that the presenters know, the State Board of Education, some years ago, did put forward a statement that spoke to the issue of lead, but also spoke to the issue of making sure that, that there was some sort of way to address the, the flushing of the systems and taking into consideration that there, there lies another gap, and you all have, have raised, all of you all have raised that, is that we have schools where maintenance has been almost none over, over some of the years, and dollars have not been there for that, the maintenance to be able to be kept up, as well as the staffing. So just some thoughts there. We learned a lot from Flint when we, when we were able to provide funding. I think it was like $400 million. I don't know if Kyle's on the, on the line. I can't remember. And that funding, we couldn't get the funding out the door because people didn't want to know. Because if they knew, then school districts would have to do something. And doing something is a lot, because putting filters on can present another issue and another issue. So, you know, making sure, you know, thinking that through. We'll have a discussion later today with DHHS, and then we'll have a discussion later today that's on the agenda, talking about schools returning. That's a lot to do in, in just a few weeks with scarcity of, of the, the experts to help schools to do that. And let me just, there was just one other point I wanted to put out. You raised the issue of businesses doing this work. One of the things that was so disheartening to me, and you all have raised this, is that businesses were testing water in Flint. They were having their water tested. There's a, there's a seal now that businesses are getting as it relates to ventilation, as it relates to this pandemic. And I think in Michigan, too, we're, we're looking at that. But here, when we talk about our schools, we don't have that type of system. It's just like, if you do it good, if your kids go to one of those schools that, where that, where it was done and they were able to do it, good for you, the rest of you, you know, good luck. So, you know, just some thoughts about that, you know, as we're having these discussions around how do you safely return to in-person school. And I'll stop there. I have several more questions, like Nikki, but I'll wait.
So this is Naina. Those are all great points and things that we're talking about in conversation. And I'm going to apologize, too. I'm unable to cut on my camera. I have a little guy in virtual learning, and so we're using up all our bandwidth in this house and trying to make it work. So I'm the person that tries to keep my camera off just for the sake of his coursework. But with that being said, we're having a lot of conversations, and we know that resources are a barrier. And like I said, you know, earlier, the key is making sure that, you know, there's schools that are testing that have the funding and the resources, and they're finding these issues. My concern is for the schools, they do not have the funding and resources to actually identify these issues. And like you said before, you know, there's this stigma of being afraid of what you're going to discover. And so a lot of the work, and Holly can speak more to that, what she's doing, is really outreach to them and saying, there are cost-effective ways that you can mitigate risk. And let us, don't let that be a deterrent and a barrier to getting tested, getting testing. And so a lot of the work that we'll be doing over the next year is really highlighting what you can do if you have limited resources. Again, there's the Filter First Initiative that I know Elin can probably speak more to, that they're hoping to reintroduce soon. So I think there's a lot of things in the works, but you're right, we have to keep those things at the forefront because we don't want that huge disparity. We want to be protective of children, especially in disadvantaged communities, and make sure that we're filling in the gaps as needed.
And I'll just piggyback on what Naina said in terms of, from the, the air quality perspective. The whole genesis of the program was focused on providing funding assessments for EJ schools and low-income schools. So the broader program is assistance for a number of EJ schools. It is paying for the whole assessment so that there, there's no cost outlay to at least find out where your system lies. And like I said, we're still working on money to take the next step, but at least you can identify the issue, which, as you, as you said, Dr. Pugh, is often a challenge because people feel like, once you figure out what it is, you got to fix it or you got to address it. And I think we're, we're at that point. We've encouraged and put out information, you know, in conjunction with the Department of Education, to systems about applying for this, but we have not been flooded, right? We've not been flooded with applications for a variety of reasons, probably. I know there's a lot going on, so your, your, your point is well-taken on that.
There, there is a lot.
And, Mr. Elin, can I weigh in?
Please, yes.
I just wanted to, for, as we're talking about the school water quality and the schools with resources and schools without, the Eagle Flushing Guidance became available after, Eagle's been rolling out wonderful tools, and maybe keep getting more and more, and they're really great for implementing. Birmingham initiated its Legionella sampling before some of those materials came out, so they didn't have the So they didn't have the benefit of that guidance for how to flush the water in the building. So when I offered up the data there, that's an example of what could happen when you're not implementing those activities. So I want to emphasize that, you know, following the Eagle guidance, you're going to have a better, much better outcome there. Those tools are great and schools should be implementing them.
Thank you, Ms. Batanzo. Ms. Lipton and, yes, Ms. Lipton.
Do we know if any of the CARES Act one-time dollars that we expect to receive as a state will be able to be used for some of these infrastructure improvements? That's the question. And then secondly...
Okay, go ahead, please.
Yeah, and then just secondly, I will note that we are one of the few states that does not have separate state funding for infrastructure. It's something that can only be done at the local level. But we do have, unfortunately, as a state, some significant constraints. And that's just a systemic problem. And as I said, I will note that we are one of the few states, perhaps maybe the only state, but certainly a very small minority of states that do not have separate state funding for major infrastructure problems in our schools. And that is a funding problem that, that we should all be aware of.
So, so to the, to the question, the most recent coronavirus relief funds explicitly note that HVAC improvements, replacements of mechanical systems are permissible. There was clarification regarding the original substantial federal release of funds in the CARES Act, that those, too, may be used for similar purposes, although that wasn't explicitly noted initially. There has been a clarification from the feds about it. Nonetheless, the more substantial pool of resources from the feds, those approved by Congress, signed into law by the president just prior to the end of the calendar year, last calendar year, those are permitted. Both pools permitted to be used for HVAC improvements. There are a lot of tugs on those dollars. And I think Ms. Strong was perhaps referring to that as one of the considerations. There are, you know, to her point, an enormous number of things that are going on. And there's only so much that any individual leadership team can do at a given moment. Moreover, as a number of us have discussed, it takes a finite amount of time to get from the point where you believe you need to replace a mechanical system to the replacement itself. That's easily a 12- to 14-month endeavor. A lot of people aren't clear about that. They think, you know, you go out to Myers or Lowe's or Home Depot or Menards and you get yourself a new HVAC system. Not so simple. You know, the system has to be reflected upon by an A&amp;E firm, by an architectural or engineering firm. It has to be spec. Those specs have to be put into a request for proposals. There have to be proposals made. There has to be pre-proposal conferences. There have to be an evaluation of the proposals once those come in. There has to be an award of the proposals. And then there's several months period of time where the company or companies that have won the awards have to get that work together, have to order their materials. And then they have to ultimately do the work. Typically, what we think about in a local school district is planning in summer one for a project that gets completed in summer two. Ms. Lipton is squarely on when it comes to funding. There are local school districts across the state with the burden of having to fund capital replacements that do not have the requisite tax base to make that happen in our state. That's through no fault of their own. It's just a function of their tax base. And the young people in those communities ought not to be adversely affected simply because they were born into a community with a diminished or lesser tax base. So this is something that we have to reflect upon. Board members may recall in the presentation that Kyle Garand did last month, Kyle Garand, Sheila Alice, and then by extension, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson and Jim Stapleton. There was a, an underscoring of the fact that there are three areas of school finance that are unaddressed substantially by the School Finance Research Collaborative Study. One of those is associated with the capital needs of public school districts. I just wanted to underscore that, perhaps a little long-windedly. I apologize. It is in part about air, though. Other, other questions or comments or concerns? Questions, comments, concerns, fears, phobias? Dr. Pugh, a second bite of the apple. No, we need you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I couldn't get to my own mute button. And again, I commend these entities for working together. And it sounds like you all are also working with DHHS as well. This is not something that has come together as nicely on the national level where the CDC and the EPA, the EPA who, who has the background in healthy schools and has the infrastructure, has not come together with CDC, who is leading the efforts around schools returning. And so that's something that we all need to push for is to have convenings and having this type of merging of the minds. And then I'll just say, you know, as we said in July, when we listened to parents, we listened to teachers and came together with the National Schools, Healthy Schools Network, is that, you know, our schools have been left as sacrifice zones. I think the question that, or the comment that Ellen brought up and the points that Dr. Rice and the department have been bringing forward, you know, these are things that we've been talking about for a long time, whether we're talking about the funding formulas, whether we're talking about policies, especially as it relates to what we learned in Flint. These are things that we cried out for and we still are lagging in policies. We should have been so much farther in where we are with, you know, the water. And it is really good to see that that school, that school network is put in place. But again, you know, again, thank you for pulling together the presentation. Thank you for the thorough presenters, who seems like we understand the problems. Now it's just us catching up to decades of just not addressing of these issues that it's, you know, now we're in a pandemic and we're trying to get our children rushed back into school. And it's unfortunate for the parents and these children that were in this space.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Any, any other board members care to share? Going once and twice and thrice. We appreciate very much the presentations from Ms. Strong, Ms. Golkey, Ms. Sassy, Ms. Batanzo. Board members, thank you very much for, for your indulgence and your participation in the morning. It has been a rich morning. It is 11:49. We will reconvene after lunch at 12:50. 12:50, 12:50 to begin the afternoon session. Thank you very much. Have a great lunch. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.